Like the call of order, Zion City Council, clerk caller roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temdeet?
Here. I'd like to ask Mr. Bremner if he would come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. You all stand, please.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir. Permission to stand down.
Permission again. Thank you, Mr. Bremner. Are there any agenda changes?
No agenda.
Pardon me. Oh. What did you say?
Prayer.
Hold on. You know what? I'm sorry, Pastor. Pray for me, would you please? Would you please pray for the city council?
Sure.
This is Pastor Carol Williams. Welcome tonight.
Well, thank you. I was gonna add, I am a resident of Zion, homeowner with my family. We live on Ezekiel Avenue. I am a member of the Zion Benton Ministerial Association, and that's why I'm here tonight. I'm also elder board member at Christ Community Church, and I'm the manager of pastoral care at CTC A, and I've been there for 12 years.
Thank you very much.
Well, let us pray. Heavenly Father, sovereign Lord, thank you for hearing our prayers. We invite you to join us and be seated here this evening. We recognize that you deserve reverence and awe and humility. We recognize your holy presence, humbly requesting of you, that we would have eyes to see your mercies that are new every morning, and to be able to experience the blessings of your wonderful working power and love. We ask you to provide wisdom that you said you would give generously and without reproach. Please give wisdom and discernment and strength to the members of this council and all who serve in the departments and committees of Zion, the city of Zion, as they manage well what they have been given, the responsibility over, within the city of Zion. We ask that you would give them peace, give us peace, that comes from surrendering our will and seeking after yours. We trust in you, and in doing so, we can hope to find straight pathways as we work and live in this city of Zion, that is, within the state of Illinois, one of the great United States. Sovereign Lord, guide and lead your people of our city, our state, our nation today for the future and for our good. We ask for provisions, resources, to accomplish the goals set forth by the council and the people. May we be true and persevere in our responsibilities to the end of our calling. May you help us, sovereign Lord, to be good citizens, getting involved in our city and support our elected servants now and in the future. Thank you, God. Thank you for our city council, for the time and energy that they give to make Zion a better place for the people. Thank you for all the staff and our city departments, for the work that each one does. Thank you for our police and firemen who keep us safe and protected. And we ask that you would give us love for one another, a thirst for doing what is right in your eyes, and a renewed vision for what should be and could be among the people of Zion. We pray going forward from this meeting and after, that you impress upon us knowledge that you are the one who is the true sovereign ruler, who sees all, who is compassionate and loving, who is wise and just, who is forgiving and the redeemer. O sovereign Lord, with an earnest heart, we give you thanks, and we ask that these requests will come to pass. Amen.
I want to thank you for that, Pastor. I probably should have asked you to pray for our mayor. He had recent surgery on his knee. He's having a lot of pain with that surgery. If anybody's had any knee surgery, you know what that's about. So even though we didn't pray for him publicly, those of you that would feel led to do that anytime, anywhere, or when you're thinking about the mayor, pray for him. I'm sure he'd appreciate that. And thank you again, Pastor. Now, we'll go back to the, are there any agenda changes for the council? Agenda changes?
May I make a request? Actually, item 12, the contract language for Local 150 Building Department has not yet been finalized. We were hoping to have that done by tonight's meeting, however, I would ask that we continue that for the next council meeting. No need for a closed session? There was still a need for a closed session.
We have to make any movements?
I'll make a motion and strike item 12.
Second.
Clerk caller roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temdeet?
Aye.
Would the clerk, well, we can sit at this conference table. Our citizens, clamens, tonight we have Mr. Clyde McLemore.
Evening, council members. I got two events coming up here in Zion. Well, this Saturday, the Black Lives Matter will be taking 30 of you from here, from Zion, to the Universal Soul Circus in Chicago. We'll be leaving from Waukegan. We're supposed to leave from here, but the buses go pick them up in Waukegan so we can have good parking while we take the children to the circus for the families on October the 20th, which I want y'all to like pray for me, because three buses of kids. Okay. All right. Second of all, our event has changed a little bit. Black Lives Matter's having their third annual community award, which will be November the 4th. Y'all saw previous flyers where John Crawford is gonna be our main speaker. He's still our main speaker. And as y'all praying, Ms. Carl Palmer, her mom passed, and she won't be our matron of honor, because she's going through right now, but she detailed me to take pictures, and she's still gonna do a story in the Chicago Defender. And so in her place, I got Will Colaway coming. Will Colaway is the young man who discovered the Laquan McDonald tapes that was hidden during the, that Ron Emanuel, the mayor of Chicago, had hidden. So this young man attended city council meetings and wondered why was this family getting a $5 million settlement? And that's how the investigation into the Laquan McDonald, investigation into the conviction of Jason Van Dyke, this young man is coming here to talk about how he did that. And also, we got Mark Jones is our master of ceremony. He stepped up when he found out that Ms. Palmer's daughter, Momma, had passed. I'm here to ask, last year, we ran into a big thing, because people are coming from out of town. They don't know that they can't park on the street no longer than two hours. I'm asking the police department, that on Sunday, November the 4th, that, you know, after our event is over, it's from 6:00 to 9:00, usually everybody leave, can we get a cease on the tickets this year? Because what happened last year with everybody getting a ticket? I mean, I did put the word out that you can't park on the street after two hours, but when people are coming to an event, they just look for a parking space, especially if they're from out of town, you know? So I'm asking the city council, can, the police department can, can you?
You know what? If I'm not mistaken, I think Monday through Friday, parking two-hour limit ends at 5:30 or 5:00 PM.
Well, last year, we got 30 tickets.
Yeah. Well, we changed, I think as a result of that and other issues.
Okay. Okay. As long as we, okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Kathy, is that Jemfire?
Champagne.
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, good evening. Kathy Champagne, 1302 Wilson Zion. I have two things. Yesterday, I attended the home rule discussion led by Administrator Nabel. It was excellent. I think, I think that he did a wonderful job fielding questions and answering questions. I hope more people come to the third one. It's very good.
Thank you.
The second thing I'd like to ask is, since you have a prayer, and because the person praying is supposed to represent the population, I think it's time that you have a woman offer the prayer.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you, Kathy.
We can do that.
I like that.
I like that.
Denise Blair?
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm sorry I missed the last few meetings, but I have a couple of questions. First of all, I've been a resident of Zion for over 50 years, and I didn't know anything. I know we can't park on the street after 2:00 in the morning, but this two-hour parking on a Sunday, that's a little crazy to me. If the businesses are closed, even downtown, nothing's going on downtown Zion. And if cars are parked downtown, we should be glad of that. At least it's extracting something, but to ticket people on a Sunday afternoon for two hours parked, that's kind of ridiculous.
Yeah, but they took it away.
Okay. My other thing, taken away. I've been coming since August, and we've been asking about the streets being cleaned. And I've been walking, and I've been walking, I've been taking pictures, I've been visiting. Nothing's getting cleaned, unless you're a city worker and you live in that neighborhood. Then the block's getting cleaned. But the other streets are not being cleaned. Now, I live on Lewis Avenue by Sherrill's, and I've been walking, and nothing's getting cleaned, east of Lewis. Nothing.
Now, you lived between 23rd and 24th?
I lived between 173 and 18th. I live right behind Sherrill's, and nothing. I've been walking, nothing's getting cleaned. Absolutely nothing. Also, a couple of months ago, I asked about solicitor's license. I called you, Spooner, two days ago, because I've been getting solicitors on Saturdays afternoons at 7:00 in the evening, and I want to know the timeframe and the dates for these people coming around soliciting. Now, this young man did tell me that they were, at 7:00 was the cutoff, and we were gonna look at changing it, but now they're coming on Saturday evenings, and who's giving them these licenses, and what are their hours? And that's why I called you, Ms. Spooner, to find out their hours, and what do we do if they do come around?
And you can, as far as those licenses on the weekend, I'm really not familiar with them. I think the police chief could tell you, or Commissioner McDowell here.
Okay.
And as far as the other problem that you have, Commissioner McKinney would probably like to say something to you after the council meeting.
Okay, no problem.
Or give him a call.
Got you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's come to the consent agenda. Would the clerk read the consent agenda, please?
A couple of minutes of a special meeting held September 6, 2018, at 1:00 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held September 6, 2018, at 1:05 PM. A regular meeting held on October 2, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on October 2, 2018, at 8:01 PM. Bills vouchers 130503 through 130611 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $307,168.82. Receive and place on file the treasurer's report for fiscal year ending April 30, 2018. We have two proclamations. Sadie Watts' 100th birthday, World Polio Day, October 24, 2018, and I will read those proclamations. Whereas the city of Zion, the official governing body, Mayor Hill, Commissioners Deteen, McDowell, McKinney, Fisher, and its citizens do hereby proclaim and recognize Ms. Sadie Morris Watts on the occasion of her 100th birthday, and whereas Mrs. Watts was born in Leighton, Alabama, on October 26, 1918, and whereas Mrs. Watts married Demet de Priest Watts in 1940 and had one daughter, Phyllis Watts, and whereas she moved to Waukegan, Illinois, in 1938, until she moved to Zion in 1952, and whereas Mrs. Watts has been an active member of not only the Zion community, but the entire North Shore, and whereas Mrs. Watts has worked at the Zion Township as a truant officer in the community action project for eight years, and worked at Glenn Kirk, a facility which serviced the needs to empower individuals with disabilities, and whereas Mrs. Watts served on several boards and committees for the betterment of our community, the Illinois Department of Aging, Department of Housing and Urban Development, which included eight counties, Zion Human Relations Commission, of which she was a chairman for many years. Whereas her volunteer and service work has been numerous, to name a few connections, Lake County 24-hour crisis hotline, where she volunteered from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, various NAACP committees, and whereas Mrs. Watts started in her home, one of the first food pantries in Lake County, committed that no one in her reach would go hungry if she could help it. And whereas she was one of the founding members of Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church of Zion in 1956, the first African-American church in Zion, and whereas she was mentor to Congressman John Lewis while they were students at American Baptist Theological Seminary in Nashville, Tennessee, and became lifelong friends. And whereas she had lived, lived being a lifelong learner, she attended Moody Bible Institute, Trinity Christian College, American Baptist Theological Seminary, and Carthage College, where she received a Bachelor Arts in Sociology in 1974. And whereas Ms. Watts, Mrs. Watts has been the recipient of numerous awards for the service to the community, including the NAACP Award for Service to the Community, the distinguished African-American Award presented by the People's Voice Newspaper, Service Award from the Women's Coalition of Lake County, the Spiritual Assembly of Bahas of Waukegan, presented Ms. Watts with an award for outstanding service in promoting harmony, tolerance, and understanding between various racial, ethnic, cultural, and religious peoples. Now therefore, I, Albert W. Hill, Mayor of Zion, do proclaim October 26, 2018, as Sadie Watts Day in the city of Zion, Illinois. Yet further proclaim that the city of Zion extends appreciation to Sadie Watts for extraordinary leadership, understanding, and abiding commitment to the public service, dated the 16th day of October 2018.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Watts is unable to be here tonight. I think Sherri has something she'd like to say about her.
I just want to share with the room, thank you so much. We are having a 100th birthday party for Sadie on her birthday at Mount Zion Church from 5:00 until 7:00 PM. And she was recently moved to Willey Hills, so she is back in Zion.
Great.
Thank you, God, answered a prayer for her birthday, so she will be at her birthday party for anybody that would like to see her. A lot of work's going in. Lou Lewis and others are working really hard on this event for her, so thank you very much.
Thank you. We're honored to have that lady in this community. I've known her for a long time. I knew her when I was young, believe that or not. And I think Commissioner McKinney did too. But she's a wonderful lady, and she has a story that's unbelievable. It's almost like a fiction story, how her life has progressed and how she got up here. I wish she would write it down in a book. It's very, very interesting. But we're thankful that she's here. We wish her well. We hope that she's around for another year. God bless, sir.
Probably the other proclamation?
Yes, go ahead.
Whereas Rotary International founded on February 23, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, to the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organization, and whereas there are 1.2 million Rotary Club members, compromised professional and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographic areas. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the global polio endocrinization initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. Whereas polio cases have dropped 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than U.S. $1.8 billion in countless volunteer hours for the protection of more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is currently working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be further leveraged for maximum impact by additional $100 billion annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. And whereas there are 20 Rotary Club members in the Illinois Beach Sunrise Rotary Club of Beach Park, Winter Harbor, and Winter Harbor servicing projects to address such critical issues as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in our local communities and abroad. Now therefore, it is proclaimed, I, Albert W. Hill, Mayor of the city of Zion, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 24, 2018, as World Polio Day in Zion, Illinois, and encourage all citizens to join myself and Rotary International in the fight for polio-free world, dated the 16th day of October 28, 16th day of October 2018.
Thank you. We receive these proclamations and place them on file? Do we need further action for that?
No, because it's part of the consent.
Okay, fine. Okay. Number seven.
The consent.
Pardon me?
We have to approve the consent.
Somebody make a motion?
Yes.
I will second.
Okay. Clerk caller roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temdeet?
Aye. Item number seven. Consider of passing ordinances followed, accepting the donation of certain property located within the city of Zion for Administrator David Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You have before you a copy of the development agreement with Zion Holdings LLC. It currently is set to expire on October 30, and they're not taking the option to renew that, but part of that development agreement is to, they have an option to donate property that they have up there to the city prior to the termination of the agreement. There's a small strip of land that you can see that runs along the railroad tracks that they are choosing to execute the option and donate that to the city. That was part of some easement with, when the transmission lines came through, that they had that control of that property. So I would recommend that, for the terms of the contract, we accept the donation of the property as presented.
Any action? Would you like? Have any questions on this?
I'll make the motion that we accept the donation of property.
Second?
Second.
Clerk caller roll, please.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temdeet?
Aye. Eight, please. Discussion and authorization and approval. Consider zoning dock at 18Z8 and/or ordinance requesting a variance to section 1024, 504 A, then six, to install solar panels on the front of the house for property located at 1306 Butterfield Lane, as petitioned by Joseph Ford for Rich Ianson Planting and Zoning Commission recommends approval. Uh, Chris Ianson, would you help us with that?
Sure. Mr. Joseph Ford, 1306 Butterfield Lane, seeking a variance to section 102, 504, A6 of the municipal code, to install solar panels on the front of the house. This section reads as follows, "Solar energy systems shall be installed in a manner that minimize visibility for public locations." Mr. Ford has already installed panels on the rear of the house, which is reducing about 45% of his energy use. If granted the variance and allowed to put them on the front, this would give him about 95% usage reduced. Act, October 4, 2018, Planting and Zoning Commission meeting, they voted to recommend the variance request.
Yeah. All right. Would you, come.
Hi, Joseph Ford, 1306 Butterfield Lane. I have some pictures, if you guys would like to look at them, kind of get an idea of what I'm gonna be talking about.
Slow.
Now, and I'm also asking for my variance, obviously, from my own home, but I'm also sort of hoping that you guys might look into the overall ordinance and possibly change to allow people to have the solar panels on the front of their house. Part of the thing is, like, I have neighbors across the street whose front of their house faces south, and there's many people like that in our community. And I know the majority of them, if any of them, won't pay the $700 to be able to get a variance, just to put solar panels on their home. I personally, it's my thing, I want to be more green if I can, so I'm willing to do that and hopefully be a first, and maybe have things change. But also, I mean, as a Zion member, and I know we have the diesel-powered energy to help us in our most energy-absorbing times in the summer, my thinking is, is more energy security is if we get solar panels, man, if every house possibly, but even most of them, we'll have a more energy-secure city. Also, we won't have to worry about so many plants having to be put up, because we'll have our own. Everybody will be taking care of it on their own. And for me, I didn't have the cash to put up the solar panels, but I'm leasing the panels through a company that's just entered into Illinois. And you basically, like I said, you lease them for 20 years, so your energy costs never go up over that whole 20-year period. You also have no cost to install them, and you have no cost to get them fixed over the time if something goes wrong. They have a system that alerts the company, they send somebody out, and if it's a panel, they just replace it, and you keep on going. So it's a really good company, it's a really good system. And for me, I also have, use a little bit more energy than most, I'll explain why. My house, we have three plug-in cars. And also, as the future comes, more of us are gonna have plug-in hybrids, which is what I have, but also, we're gonna go, a lot more people are gonna be electric, it's gonna be more affordable. And in, when that happens, that's a lot more energy that's gonna be coming that, you know, the infrastructure isn't quite fully ready for that. But if we get ahead of that and allow front, solar panels on the front of people's homes, you know, we have that chance to avoid something that may come up in the future, be a problem for us, we wouldn't have to scramble for it, we'd be already ready for it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I think they look, from photos, they look nice. I've seen a couple of houses, a house on the east side that has the solar panels, and they look great.
Yeah.
But I didn't, I wasn't aware of the new wrinkle that you could lease them now, because from what I understand, they're pretty expensive to purchase.
Yeah. For example, my solar system, if I were to get the front and the back, total cost is a little over $40,000. But to lease them, it's nothing, and the cost to me for my monthly cost is really right in the middle of the range of what I'm paying in a monthly already, and in the 20 years, I'm actually paying less than if I paid upfront for the solar panels. So, and, you know, I don't want to say how much I'm cost-paying, because it depends on how much your usage is, is how big the solar system you need to your monthly costs, so it varies depending on yourself.
You mentioned something also about the systems, some of the homes facing south. How does that impact installation?
Well, the house, the sun is basically in your south all year long. In the winter especially, it's even more. In the summer, it gets a little bit more up, but the north side of the house gets almost zero sun. So if you're, all the panels need to go on the south side of your house if your, if your front of your house faces south, or you'll have almost no, even if you fill up the whole back, you're gonna get hardly any actual use out of those panels.
Good to know.
The difficulty that arises is that the way the ordinance is written is that, and the reason he's asking for the variance is because it restricts the panels to the non-public-facing side of the property. So even if somebody has a south-facing property, if that face is towards the public street, they would require a variance to install the panels. And I think what Mr. Ford is asking for, and I also happen to agree with it, is that we need to look at rewriting the ordinance to allow those panels to be mounted on the roof, as long as they're flush-mounted, I think would be the key.
Yeah, that's as flush as they can get. That one, there's about maybe that much gap from the bottom of the panel to the That one, there's about maybe that much gap from the bottom of the panel to the...
I don't think we would want angled panels on the front of a property, but I think it's acceptable, even from an aesthetic perspective, to have flat-mounted panels.
I would.
On the facing side of it.
I would concur with you, because it, it looks like skylights. And it really, really well, they add some, they do add some style to the house.
And it's also a major investment for a property owner that should ideally add value to the property, so.
Yeah, I know, in southern states it has. In Illinois, we're still real new with it. I believe it will in the future. And also, if you, any questions on the company I'm using? If you lease them, they, they have a part of their, built into their company that if you sell your house, they move that lease on to the new owner. So there's no problems with the transition also.
Okay.
Did you, I didn't see the pictures.
No, yeah, sure. Really, thanks. Do we have any other questions from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve variance.
Second.
Clerk all the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Detteen?
Aye. Eight, V. Consider zoning dock at 18Z10, an ordinance requesting a variance to section 102, 206B2, to continue a single-family use for a property located at 1919 Sheridan Road, as petitioned by Sherri, is it, Palucci, for Rich Ianson. And the planning and the zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you. Mrs. Sherri Palucci is seeking a variance of section 102, 206B2 of the municipal code to continue a single-family use of a property located at 1919 Sheridan Road, in the Highway Business 2 zoning district. Current municipal code reads that if a property becomes vacant or remains unoccupied, or is not used for a period of six months, it should conform to the regulation of the district which it is located. At October 4, 2018, planning zoning commission meeting, we voted to recommend the variance request.
Any questions from the council?
No.
No question?
No, I'll make a motion that we approve the variance.
Second?
Second.
Clerk all the roll, please.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Detteen?
Aye. C, eight, C. Consider waiving manager's fidelity, uh, on raffle appreciation requirement per Administrator David Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You have before you a, um, request for a waiver, an application for a license for a raffle from the event that Mr. McMoore was talking about with Black Lives Matter on November 4th, and I didn't get it right, did I? November 4th, okay. So we had, we, part of the problem that we had with the application was it does conflict with some of our current code, um, as far as what eligibility for issuing of a license is. However, um, in discussing with Mr. McMoore and looking at the 501(c)(3) and the event itself, um, I would recommend that we still issue the license based on the history that we've had, this event in the past couple of years, the raffle the past couple of years, without any incident. Um, as soon as they found out that they needed to apply for the raffle, they didn't apply for a license in the past, they weren't aware of it, as soon as they found that out, they are complying voluntarily, or they are complying with that, trying to do the right thing. Um, and the risk with the prices that are being raffled is relatively low, so I would recommend that we make an exception in this case, and then we look at the existing ordinance moving forward for all future events, to make sure we address the conflicts.
Any, uh...
I'll leave for approval of the, uh, the waiver.
Second. Clerk all the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Detteen?
Aye. Departmental commentary. Do we have any comments from the department heads, uh, tonight? Anybody have anything to say?
Well, we just heard from Fire Department.
Okay, we'll move on then. There's, here's some announcements. Number 10 announcements, on the 27th of October, 10 to noon, 10:00 AM till noon, a Home Rule informational meeting at the city council chambers. Please tell your friends about it, and, and if you haven't been to one of the meetings, I'd appreciate it if you'd come out. Mr. Nabel did a tremendous job the other day and explained it. A lot of people, when anything news seems to come up, people, all, all of a sudden, they, they object to it, when really they don't know what the whole story is. They can come and get the story at this informational meeting, and then decide what they want to do. And I think it's, the way that Commissioner Nabel or Administrator Nabel presents it is very informative, and, uh, he answers all the questions that you have. And so, I, I encourage you to be there, and to tell your friends about it. And some of your friends might say, "Well, I don't want to go." If you read the news, or some of these other newspapers, there's some negative thoughts about it. But if people would come and listen, uh, they might have a different outlook on it. So please be there if you can.
May I add one, one bit to that? If you don't want to get out of your pajamas on Saturday morning, we are streaming it on Facebook as well, so you can watch, and we'll, if you have questions, we'll be taking questions live on that as well, and addressing them, um, that way. So if you can't get here, please still check it out online.
Thank you. Uh, on the 28th of October, between 2:00 PM and 5:00 PM, trick or treat. Trick or treat, money or eat. November the 6th, Zion, 7:00, Zion City Council meeting. On the 20th of November, 6:15, Zion Township Board Meeting, and 7:00 City Council Meeting. November 22nd and 23rd, city offices are closed for Thanksgiving. Can you believe we're at Thanksgiving time already?
Yeah.
My God.
Oh, do we get the festival?
If necessary for us to go into closed session, so, someone make a motion that we go into closed session. Second?
Second.
Clerk all the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Detteen?
Aye. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I've been, I've been doing my crazy nights.